You may be trying to find a place to park. Oh, I said you may be trying to find a place to park. I mean, it was full parking lot.
Maybe he's gonna come in for landing. Yeah, exactly. Okay, I call this meeting to order. It's August the 12th at 6:30 PM. And present, we have Bubba, Haggard, Hollis Shannon, Robin Morris, April Johnson. First off, we have the invocation. Lord, we come to you tonight and ask that you be with us, that you guide us, that you show us what you would have us to do and how to take care of our city the best way possible. Help our personalities who not come into it, help us to be gentle with each other and to get along. Lord, help us that we can do this and do it in a civil manner. We pray this in your son's name. Thank you, sir. First up, Deana Carroll.
I don't like having this right up by me because you know I'm loud anyway, so tell me if you can hear me.
Okay, and let me ask that when you come up to speak, would you let us know whether you live in the county or in the city?
Live in the city, close to Brookshires, and my name is Deana Carroll. I think I know most of you. Born and raised here in Jefferson, Texas, moved off, came back. What I'd like to say is in regards to the proposed budget for 2025 and the redistribution of money that Friends of Jefferson Animals was given under Mayor Rob Baker's tenure. And I want to give you a little backstory a bit on that. For those that were on the council or anyone that has been watching over the last almost six years, less than three minutes from here, six years ago, we had a pretty bad episode with our humane society. And I felt the need as a teacher at the time to jump in and help with that. Some of my friends subsequently felt the need to jump in and Friends of Jefferson Animals was formed. We formed it as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and I won't lie, for two years, we struggled hard to help animals in this county. Not just in the county, when I say Marion County, I'm including Jefferson in the city limits. Everybody that lives in the city limits always complains about the cats and the cat overpopulation. And if you've watched any of the, I don't want to say lectures, but bits of information that I've given over the past few years, cats can breed at over three times a year, three litters a year. So when you don't like cats in the city, the only way to eradicate or help alleviate that issue is through humane efforts, which is what we do. Trap, neuter, spay and return. We tip their ears and release them back into the colony so that they can minimize over time. We do have animals in our care currently, three dogs that came from within the city limits as well. Both are, all three are females, one was already altered, the other two not. I picked those up over at McNolia Manor not too long ago. I get calls daily, text messages daily, emails daily. And I think it needs to be stressed that it isn't a hobby for me. In fact, it's very stressful. I'm like a non-paid animal control officer, if I'm being honest. But I also don't like to see things suffer. And I also don't like to have a means to help them and sit back and go, you know, I just don't feel like doing it anymore. When Mayor Baker jumped in and gave us the money to help, we were at that very same time being partnered up with a transport group out of New York. And subsequently, we have ended up sending close to 1,500 animals out of this county. They get altered where they go and they send us help in the means of worming and things like that. When I say we have an issue here, I'd be happy to take any city council member on a ride around in any part of the county you want to go and I can show you where there are problems. You can't shake a stick and not find one. It's oftentimes very depressing and as I spoke with the county judge not too long ago, because thankfully, the county has now joined the fight, they've allocated $10,000 in matching grant money for us since we received a grant from Miranda Lambert Spay-Neuter program. Thank you, and I'm just asking that you stay with us.
Next up, we have Sharon Goolsbee.
I think she's still at the other board meeting.
Okay, Tammy Smith.
Hello, my name is Tammy Smith. I live in the county, but I have four businesses in town here. And I would just like to say that unless you have a plan in place to step in and handle the animal control issues that this dedicated and compassionate group of volunteers known as Friends of Jefferson Animals have been handling, then I would respectfully request that you reconsider your decision to reduce their budget of 16,000 to a measly 500. These volunteers are working tirelessly to try to curb the population of unwanted animals and provide care for the animals which have been dumped or abused within the city and within the county. They educate people on how critical it is to spay and neuter their animals and help people that are less fortunate to get their animals vaccinated against disease. My husband and I have four rescue dogs, one of which came from a FOGA rescue. As business owners, we've had to deal with stray dogs and feral cats harassing tourists and their children throughout downtown. It's embarrassing when you have tourists asking why we have so many stray cats running around here and stray dogs. And I can tell you that where I have the T&amp;K Homemade Ice Cream and the Hoarders Haven Shop, I can tell you that we have had folks that have been buying ice cream that are standing there. We've had a couple of stray pit bulls that have come up. We've had feral cats running across the street chasing kids and stuff. And the tourists, it scares them. So, and seeing as how we are a tourist-driven community, it needs to be addressed. And if we're not going to put something or put someone in place or set up some type of dedicated humane society in town to help with this problem, then we need to do everything that we can to try and help the Friends of Jefferson Animals to do the amazing work that they have been doing tirelessly. Thank you.
Next up is Janet Grubbs. Do we need to introduce you, Janet?
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the council. And I would like to share a few thoughts, and I hope I can do it without getting emotional. The city's mayor and city council are elected to serve the citizens of the city. Your job is kind of like mine, I'm a teacher, therefore I serve. As such, we sometimes have to make hard decisions to meet the will and the needs of those we serve. The proposed reduction in funding to Friends of Jefferson Animals, in my opinion, is not in the best interest of the citizens of Jefferson and clearly not the will of the constituents represented here tonight. If this proposed budget goes forward, it will be a crushing blow to the dedicated volunteers of Friends of Jefferson Animals. And it will certainly be a death sentence for helpless, abandoned and abused animals in our town. It will be a huge black eye for everyone in the city of Jefferson. And last but not least, it will be a rally cry for the next city elections. Thank you.
Next up, Kay Cannon.
Good evening, Mayor Finstrom, city council members and the staff. I'm Kay Cannon, I reside here in Jefferson. First and foremost, I want to thank each of you for your hard work and dedication to the city of Jefferson. Thank you for your continued support to our library, community service, special events, Jefferson Slips America, Corvette Show, Burn Run, Crew, Hebe, Marty Graff, Fire Department, Police Department. All of those are very important to our town. As you were making your final decision for the 2025 budget, I challenge each of you to reconsider the proposed budget from 16,359 that was reduced to 500. Our animal control will be totally out of control if this is not addressed. Look at what Friends of Jefferson Animals has accomplished since founded. Should you choose not to make this a priority, we will be taking steps backwards. The proposed 25 budget amount of 500 will not touch one-eighth of our town and county animal issues. We are the animals' voices. Do not let this pass as proposed. I challenge each one of you to take a ride through town as well as Lake of the Pine area. We need Friends of Jefferson Animals to continue to fight animal cruelty. Reconsider budgeting minimum of 20,000, please. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Rob Baker. Okay, Sharon.
I'm sorry, trying to be two places tonight at one with the tourism meeting, so anyway. As I updated, first of all, we have nothing but praise to say for putting FOGA back in the budget when Mayor Baker did that. We started this almost six years ago under a very sad situation that was going on and we've just worked on it from scratch. I keep all, I guess I'm the financial secretary and the secretary too, but I'm also the cat person. And Deana handles the dogs for the most part for transport and I handle the cat end of it. But on the financial side of it, I went back to January the 1st and there has been approximately, and this is without transport costs because those are very delicate, have to be divided out. But without the transport costs with supplies, with food, with veterinary care and everything else since the first of the year, it's been $27,000 spent on nothing but Jefferson Animals. And four quarters of 16, a little over $16,000 was what the city gave us for those city animals. So, we are spending that quarter amount plus more taking care of this. This is not, also not counting what's coming out of our pockets. Because I can tell you right now, with the situation that we have had since early March with some issues with the cats, Kit, Williams, myself and two volunteers worked three to four hours every single day after work, cleaning cages, taking them to vet appointments, to feeding them, to socializing them, to find them homes. We just sent five to Connecticut who now have homes in that part of it. It's an essential part of the community. Also, there are over 30, I put something out on Facebook this week asking how many residents in the city limits as well as the county were manning cat colonies. I didn't have anybody from the county respond, but I had over 30 responding from the city. These people, there's only two or three of those that are asking for any help whatsoever. As far as food or APL, they're going all of this out of their pockets. They're trapping, neutering, spaying out of their pockets. So these colonies are being taken care of that way. If any of you have ever looked...
Your time's up.
Time's up, okay. I would just like to say if you want to know anything about feral cat colonies, look at Alley Cat Allies. But I'm specifically asking you to please reinstate FOGA's money. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, how are y'all? I'm not here to talk about FOGA. My position's pretty clear, I've already talked to my aldermen, so I don't need to opine for the support that they dearly need. Two things, one is, you know, I hope during the budget workshop, y'all have a little transparency around some of the spending, like 310,000 for buildings, whether the citizens know that that's for a city hall thing or whether it's bathrooms at Lions Club Park or whether it's something else. It's just something that hasn't been on the budget, so I hope there's transparency. The other thing, and I'd like to offer, there's some things about the budget that you're going to have problems with your loans and compliance unless you know where to look. So be more than happy to help look at that if you want to pass it by me, but there's a couple of things wrong with it today, so that's it.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to make a statement. First of all, I'm not against the cats. I am against what they do on my porch. I am against them all over town. If you want to feed them, feed them at your house, don't feed them out on public property. And we really didn't have this problem until everybody started feeding them. Now, I believe that tax money should be spent on things that benefit all citizens or at least bring the best to as many people as possible. The city has a debt amounting to $4,871,146. We have lead pipe inventory that's going to run about $142,000. We have a grant that will cover this, hopefully, and the replacement of the lead. But in the meantime, we've got to pay the 142 up front. And then when we get the grant, it's for 51%. We have to pay 49% of that grant. That grant's for $3.1 million. The government says we've got to replace the lead pipes. Now, you know, here's the deal, I don't see where we can handle all of this. The city's files are in the old city hall and in the old public bathrooms. They need to be moved to a climate-controlled storage building. The police have items that need to be stored in a climate-controlled storage building. I think it would be a good idea to build a storage building down behind the police department to put these files in and that will solve both those problems at the same time and be more economic than trying to add storage into city halls. Once the files have been moved from the old city hall, then we can start demolition of the old city hall and the underground tanks if there are some. Water is running from underneath city hall perhaps, the engineer seems to think that probably is where it's coming from, to the general store and it's starting to affect their foundation. Now, the bodies have been quite patient with us trying to get this fixed or at least to have an answer. Then that brings us to the new city hall. I think the city hall and fire station can be built for quite a bit below the $3 million. We can contact a local architect and have them draw up the plans and specifications for this building and build it. Hopefully, we can do it with, and that's part of the 310,000 that Rob's worried about. Hopefully, we can build that without having to go further in debt. This is why the budget must cut things that are not associated with infrastructure or building needs. It's common sense that we should first do what the law dictates us to do and then work on things that the city needs in paying off debts. There's not even savings for us to fall back on. So what we're doing is trying to move ahead. And I sympathize with FOGA, but I don't have the answer for it and there's not money there. You know, we really feel bad for the cats and things. I feel bad for the children that go home on the weekend not knowing if they're going to have anything to eat. That's where my heart lies. Thank you. Next up, we have Action Adams. Consider, discuss and/or approve appointment of Daniel Harrigan to fill the vacant position of Ward 2. Do I have a motion?
If I make a motion.
I think we need to discuss first.
No, you have to make a motion and second it before it can be discussed, that's Robert's rules. I'm just telling you, because here's the thing, if you don't have a motion and a second, there's no need discussing it if nobody's interested in that. And that was one of the things that also at KML they taught us. So, do I hear a second? Okay, Hollis has made a motion. Do I hear a second? Robin seconds it, okay, April.
My question was, I kind of, like, when I got here, nothing against Daniel, I don't even know Daniel, but he kind of introduced himself to me and told me that he would be sitting next to me. So that's even before we have even made a vote or, you know, or anything. So I'm like, is this pre-voted on before I already know or something? You know, I just didn't know, that I thought I might have missed something. So, just me personally, and these are just my thoughts. Because I remember being that same person and then I was told I should have ran if I wanted to be sitting in this seat. Yeah, so when it came, I was in the same position as he was, wanted to be appointed or whatever. But I was told that I should have ran. So now that I sit here and I have ran for office and done all of that stuff, I don't think, I think the seat is fine vacant, me personally, but that's just my thoughts, my discussion. That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Well, I have a little context to that. April, we did have someone that ran for that position and lost.
Exactly.
Right, but at least they ran for it. So that's why we felt like that person would be the one in line in order. And then you did run subsequently and won, so that's the way you do it.
Okay, so that's why I feel he should have ran when it was time to run.
There was nobody that ran.
Exactly, are you missing my point or you're not listening to me?
I guess I am missing your point. No one ran. There wasn't somebody there to take that position.
That means he missed the opportunity to run, so in my opinion, I feel like he should run again next time. It's just my one opinion, if everybody else decides to vote him in, that's a vote. But you're just, you're not listening to what I was saying.
I'm listening, I hear you.
Anybody else?
Well, in my opinion, our whole system of government is based on equal representation for all. And at this point, Ward 2 doesn't have equal representation because there's not a second person in that ward. Also, with the appointments that each alderman makes to the JEDCO, tourism, planning and zoning, with not that person and nobody in that seat, then that's, I don't know exactly all the ins and outs of that, but to me, it's questionable as to whether those people that were there under will are actually supposed to be there or if they're supposed to drop out. And we need to, I believe we need to have these units all at full strength to do their job.
Anything else? All in favor of appointing Daniel Harrigan to city council Ward 2? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Four against?
Opposed.
One, and that's it, that's all of us. At this time, Dan, Melissa, we'll swear you in.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Daniel Harrigan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly...
That I have not directly...
Or indirectly...
Or indirectly.
Pay?
Paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promise to pay?
Promise to pay.
Contributed?
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute?
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value?
Anything, money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office?
Or promised any public office.
Or employment?
Or... Or employment?
For the giving.
For the giving.
Or withholding.
Or withholding.
Of a vote?
Of a vote.
At an election at which?
At an election of which?
I was elected.
I was elected.
Or?
Or.
As a reward?
As a reward.
To secure my appointment?
Secure my appointment?
Or confirmation?
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be. God.
All right, now we'll do the votes of office. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Daniel Harrigan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of office?
The duties of office.
Of alderman Ward 2.
Of alderman Ward 2.
For the city of Jefferson.
For the city of Jefferson.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state.
And the state. For God. Thank you. Thank you.
It's been brought to my attention that I overlooked Ms. LeBlanc, if you'd like to come speak.
Well, hello, my name is Ann LeBlanc and I own the Clayboard House. I do live in the city. And Patricia, I voted for you. And I voted for a lot of y'all, but some I didn't know not to vote. And I want to vote for you next time. Patricia, did I hear you right when you said, "I like cats, but I don't like them on my porch"?
No, I said...
You said that, right?
Well, that's the truth because my porch stinks so bad. I'm not supposed to discuss this with you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, you got my three minutes, I want them minutes back. It's 30 to 40 cats that they found out they're dead, they're in a pile in the woods close to town. Murdered, shot, not just stray cats. Kit Cornbread, her cats got shot, not once but twice. Pam from the Jefferson Hotel, their cat didn't get shot, it had a wire around its neck and it was pregnant. And that was April the 8th, she had the babies and I got one of the kittens. Now, when you said you don't like cats on your porch, did you hire somebody to take care of the cats in this town? That's the question I'm going to ask you and you better tell the truth because 30 to 40 cats are dead, tortured in this town. Nobody has a clue who's doing it, but since you're cutting the cat budget, this thing, it might start with you. I'm not saying you killing them, you might have hired somebody to do it. And I'm facing you right now. I love the cats in this town. Yes, they are a problem. But we've been seeing improvement the last ten years in this town. The animals, we have probably twelve of us women in this town, that will take the cats in and, you know, and find them a home. And we don't get paid. We don't ask to get paid. But when somebody in this town murdering the cats, I have a problem with that. I've talked to the chief. He has no clue who's doing it. So I'm asking everybody in this room, we love cats, we love animals. We need to find out who's doing it. This is wrong. And whoever's doing it, I don't wanna be them, because you're gonna have to answer to him. And the budget, the three million dollar budget for the City Hall. Bubba, you was, uh, mayor, right? Yet we have a budget of five million dollars. What happened to that? Now we're in a hole four million. So Patricia, I'm gonna ask you to look for that money, because something's wrong with five million dollars missing and no improvement in this town. But I voted for the wrong person, and I'm sorry. Next time it will not happen, don't get comfortable in that seat.
Believe me, you can't.
No, don't get comfortable.
Okay, next up, we have, consider, discuss, and/or approve authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Jefferson and engineers Schoenberg and Park Hope Incorporated for professional services in connection with the lead service line replacement inventory project. Do we hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Hollis made a motion.
Second.
Bubba seconded. Any discussion? Okay, so all in favor? Raise your hand, or whatever. Okay. Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Six oh. Consider, discuss, and/or approve entering into record the tax assessor certified appraisal role. And you all have a copy of that. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Hollis, I Hollis, made a motion to approve.
Second.
April seconded. All, any discussion?
It would've been, I mean, it would've been nice to have her here, kinda
She's out of town. She's someplace else, yeah. She
But she'll be here on, uh, next Monday. She'll be here next Monday to help council understand more on the proposed budget or the proposed tax rate. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, here none. All in favor? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, consider, discuss, and/or approve entering into the record the anticipated 2024 collection rate. We also have that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
April made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hollis seconds. Any discussion? Having no discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, they're all in favor. Consider, discuss?
Well, I was gonna ask, she's not here. I was gonna ask where she gets a hundred and seven percent, but never mind, we don't know yet. Well, I went till Monday.
Consider, discuss, and/or approve setting a date for the fiscal year 2024-25 budget hearing. Do I hear a motion?
It's for September eleventh, for the budget hearing.
I also move.
Bubba, I made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Hollis second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. I think that was everybody. Okay, consider, discuss, and/or approve setting a date for the 2024 tax rate hearing.
That's September twelfth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
April made a motion.
I'll second.
Hollis second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That's it. Okay, next up, uh, we're going to discuss the Texas Water Fund, the Water Loss Mitigation Project, and this intent to, to apply. Uh, let me just say this right up front. Bubba
Yes.
You violated the Open Meeting Act.
How?
When you got online and encouraged everybody to call and vote or, or asked me to please sign this. That was the first thing I wanna say. Second thing I wanna say is that you and Alan somehow managed to do all this with nobody else knowing. Alan come in and laid a piece of paper down on my desk, where I was sitting, and said he would like for me to sign it. It was for our grant. I read it. It said intent to apply. I said, "I'm not signing anything until I figure out what it is." Well, the two of y'all have managed to go and decided that that's what we need. Our government for the city is run by administrator. We don't have one now, so that power goes to Melissa, our city secretary. She's the one that should have been notified.
She was. You see on my deal, I said it during No, you said it on the twenty-fourth. That was the first I knew about.
I'm not gonna, I am not going to argue with you about this.
Well, I'm just telling you
I'm telling you, I know the truth.
You listen to what I'm saying once in a while. I've sent that to her. She's got evidence. I sent it to her the twenty-fourth, and that's the first day I knew about it.
Well, Alan knew about it before that. That's all I gotta say.
If he did, I didn't know it, 'cause that's the first day, that's the first time I knew it. I got on that website and saw it.
So, uh, you got what?
I got on that website there and saw it, where the Texas Water Development Board sends that out as a newsletter.
That being the case, perhaps you should have called our city secretary, because that's the way it works.
I sent it to the city secretary.
You don't have the power to do that.
I sent it to the city secretary.
Anybody else wanna say anything?
Does it cost anything to apply?
No, no, but, but we don't want everybody and anybody just going around and applying.
Nobody can apply but you. You're the mayor.
I know, but, but here's the thing
I notified the city secretary, and that's who I'm supposed to notify, and I did.
There again, I'm not gonna argue with you about it.
I think we're kinda dealing with semantics.
Some what?
Semantics. That's a big word I'm gonna use tonight. I just feel like I appreciate anybody that is looking out for ways we can find funding, whether it's Bubba or whether it's somebody out there in the, as a citizen. Shoot it to us. Let's do it. And if it doesn't cost anything,
I think what the point you're missing is that they're not shooting it to us. They're doing things, Bubba Kau had called the, our architects on this new city hall to visit with them back some time ago. Didn't copy me to, or Melissa either one, but this is an ongoing problem.
No, it's not. I, whenever I call, when I call the architect, I asked her to send me a map.
Twice, that's all I can talk
I just said, "Send me a map." That's all I asked her. I have not talked to her about the makeup of it or nothing else.
Thank you. That's all. Now, anybody else?
Can we apply for this?
Yes, we're going to. And Bubba, you would have known this had you bothered to call me instead of coming down and going through the big to-do with Melissa. She gets nothing done, because about every day or so, you decide you need something special done, so you come watch it down here and bother her.
I do every once in a while. That is my job as a city council member.
Email her, email her. Okay, I'm not gonna argue anymore about that, but I do know how it happened. Now, moving right along, next we have the budget workshop. Okay, let's hit it running.
So we are gonna apply for this, right?
Right, doing what?
So we are gonna apply for this?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wish you would include me.
Well, don't you remember calling me up and screaming at me?
I sure do, and why did I, why did I do it?
Now that's why I don't call you anymore, and I'm not gonna do, I didn't do anything, and you wouldn't let me tell you what I was, all I was doing to tell our architect.
I know what you had already done, Bubba. And that's, I knew what you had already done. I'm not gonna argue this with you anymore.
Well, I'm tired of being lectured every time I come in here. I'm a city council member that are elected by these people out here to do my job, and I think you ought to be a, a little bit more grateful for help.
I don't remember asking you for help.
I, I'd give you help whether you want it or not.
I know that, oh, yeah, I know that.
If I know something, you don't, I'm gonna try to tell you or Melissa about it.
Okay.
Y'all do know this is why people gonna keep tuning in.
Ma'am?
I said, "This is exactly why people are going to keep tuning in," because this is just ridiculous for us to come and do this every single week.
It is. It absolutely is.
It's been going on since we did the turnover, and I just don't like all of the drama, and that's what people are tuning into. We want people to be tuning in. We gotta do better. Like, we practice and preach on, we want, how can we expect for the citizens to come in here and, and try to be better and try to talk to us better and stuff like that, when we can't even discuss? I'm not gonna say we're gonna always get along, but we gotta be able to get through some stuff. Like yesterday, I'm sitting here walking like a baby deer today, only because I sit there and gave out over a hundred and something backpacks, gave out hygiene stuff to people, to citizens, to kids who are worried about if, you know, we got to do better. I'm not saying we're gonna always get along, and yes, it is some stuff that we, I mean, he may do, overstep his boundaries sometimes. But like Robin said, and we don't always agree, but I do agree with her saying if he's trying, let's just, we got to lay some stuff aside, past stuff. We got to move, try to keep moving forward. Like, all of this arguing, that's what people want to see us do. That's what they expect.
Oh, yeah.
Some stuff we gotta talk about. I mean, yes, transparency, yes, that's, but some of it, it, it's just ridiculous, and we gotta do better as citizens.
Well, and we don't need to be getting on Facebook and airing all of the city's business. That was the one thing that T M L said. The best thing that anybody on city council could do would be to stake off of Facebook and to also use their city email account, because otherwise, you cannot erase anything off of your private account in case it's called up and it's wanted for, whatever the word is, uh, and for Open Records Act. So, Dave said that doing that, just doing it on face, on, um, the city email accounts, just the best. I'm just trying to encourage y'all. I'm just trying to keep it straightened out. I know the budget is pretty wobbly. I thought I'd give y'all a chance to tell me what you think. Other than, you think it's stupid? You can tell me that.
Well, I cannot get past this police budget. I'm just flabbergasted. I am I, I, I can't even speak. I did a little research about area police department budgets.
Are we gonna go in a, in order or are we just jumping? Are we going in order by the pages?
Well, she didn't ask us to go by page. She just asked us what we thought.
I thought, I thought we'd get started somewhere, so since Robin's got this on her mind, let's let her talk about the police department, and then we'll start and go page by page.
Here you go. Did you pass that down? Could you take one of these and pass it?
Yes, ma'am.
And what I found, now, our proposed budget for the Police Department of Jefferson, Texas, eight hundred thirty-one thousand sixty-nine dollars. Proposed budget, well, the actual budget for Linden, same pretty much population as we have, five hundred twenty-one, seven sixty-four. Hughes Springs, less population, three thirteen, seven fifty. And then Dangerfield, which about a thousand doll, I mean, a thousand more, well, I guess about seven hundred more population, six sixty-three, eight sixty-four. I just don't, I, I just don't get it. I mean, and, and look too at Linden. They have Highway fifty-nine running through Linden as well. And look at their revenue. And they've almost met their proposed revenue. And ours, you know, is nothing to sneeze at. Our revenue is pretty good too, but in, in comparison to the budget, I just don't see how that jives. And I think, uh
I agree.
I think the police department is, uh, is a filet mignon budget, and our infrastructure here in the city, within the city, is a pork and beans in a can cold budget.
We don't even warm it.
Yeah, so we've got to, uh
Yeah.
We gotta get a program going where we're proactive. We have sewer lines that are crushed. And when it rains, the rainwater floods in, so you know what happens to the sewer. We have water lines. I know the water line that runs beside my house on Watson Street, it got run over by a truck making that corner one time and got smashed. Well, we got to witness the city putting it back together, and we have about that much water coming through, which is smaller than the quarter, quarter size. And it's an old, old water line. And we're not working to proactively replace those old lines, repair those sewer lines until we get into trouble. And I think we need to, um, spread the money around a little differently, and I think the police department needs to make some serious cuts in their budget.
Can I just speak on what Robin, looking at, 'cause Dangerfield is my hometown. I go there a lot. And if their budget is that much, I almost feel like our police department budget should be a million dollars, because they have, we have way more tourists here, different people here. Dangerfield is, I'm actually shocked that it's actually that much. And Linden, my husband coaches in Linden, so I'm, I'm there a lot as well. Go through Hughes Springs. Yeah, I mean, just looking at this, if you, like I said, Dangerfield is proposed that much, I can see why ours is where it is, 'cause we have way more traffic happening here all the time, and different people in and out than Dangerfield, any day of the week of the year, so, just saying.
Okay, so get your pencil out. Where do you wanna cut? Where do we wanna start? Or do we wanna go back and start at the beginning? While, while we got Robin's fresh on our mind, let's just do it. What, um, I'm up for suggestions. I think one thing, that this vehicle, I think we could cut it in half and plan so that every two years, they buy a new vehicle. We put it in the budget. That's just my thought.
I think it would be good for the department heads to come and go over these with us.
I have gone over these with the department heads, and that's where these figures come from. And I mean, I'll be happy to, yeah, I mean, Ken is standing back there right now. But But this, this is where these figures come from. We sat down with them, and Melissa was gone, so I asked Hollis to come with me. And Alan, we sat down with Alan and went over all of his. We sat down with Tino and went over his.
I have a question on hospitalization. I see where it's, um, we're going, we're proposing to go up on that. What is that for employee, uh, hospitalization?
That's on your salary worksheet. And that's the insurance with the proposed increase on the health insurance.
How much was the health insurance last year? Remember?
Um, yes.
I was just wondering how much it's going up.
I have Rob's budget here.
Well, okay, so, last year the budget was eighty-four.
Yeah, so it's almost going up twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three.
And in twenty-twenty, in twenty-twenty-three, we spent about eighty thousand. I, you know, I...
I don't have the salary worksheet here. I can get last year's salary worksheet though.
Well,
No, last year.
Here's the, for the first three months of the, for the first nine months of the year, we spent seventy-one, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. So, that's just high on everybody's. I mean, in here, I don't, I don't understand it why it's so high, but.
Our insurance lady.
Is this budget, does it balance with what our
No.
tax income's going to be?
No. No.
It's not?
Doesn't even come close. It's Bubba phoning it out on Facebook. If you're not on Facebook, you're losing out. Here's the deal. I did this so everybody could see what, what the department heads wanted, so y'all can see what's really going on. What they really want, what they really think, and where our money really needs to go.
So, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, is it, is there any way that you could sit and possibly talk with Rob and kind of work out?
Sure.
Or just look before? Cause I just don't want us to be all out of whack, all out of, I just feel like it should be some kind of, you know, transition. I'm not sure if y'all have did a transition or whatever y'all have done.
There's no carryover from la, from last year, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, just...
No, there's no carryover. I mean, what, what your budget was last year and what you spent. If you didn't spend all of your budget, you don't get to move it.
No, 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 I, I don't mean carryover like that. I mean, um, interaction from you and him to kind of, to make this transition a little bit smoother for us.
Basically, what we're gonna have to do to budget it now that we know approximately what we're gonna have coming in. We're just gonna have to sit down and go through it and cut things. And that's, I think, city council needs to help do that. And if y'all don't want to, I'll sit down and I can budget. I mean, I could balance the budget. If y'all think that would be better for me to present y'all with a balanced budget.
That's what I'd like.
That's what I'd like too.
Well, I think that with the state of things, on the expense that we've been incurring and as prices have risen, that it's time to consider maybe cutting some of the police force. I know that that is not gonna be very popular, and it reflects not at all on the personnel.
We're shorthanded, so.
We're shorthanded, but looking at it from a fiscal point of view, the population of this town has been declining over the past two census. And maybe it's time that we pare back on the police force. Maybe pare back in some other areas as well. And if anybody deserves raises, it would be the, uh, our minimum wage
I agree.
individuals who are only getting, what, twelve and a half?
They're getting twelve dollars an hour.
Twelve an hour.
I would like to see them raised fifteen.
That would be, for me, that would be the only income raise that I could really get behind. I know inflation has impacted everybody, but we're reaching a point where we can't dip into the general fund to bail us out. We're not like the federal government. We can't just sell more T bills and T bonds. As it was brought up already, all it would take is one horrific sewer disaster to wipe us out. And so it's a tough, it, it's hard, hard to bring it up, hard to put it before the people. But we can't afford to carry on as we have been carrying on in the past. We've got to start paring back. We've lost an employer that, well, it's gonna, we, not yet, but in the next month, we're gonna lose an employer. Uh, legislature increased the homestead exemption. So revenue, uh, I don't think it's gonna grow like everybody thinks it will. Home prices are starting to come down. I follow the home prices of the houses for sale around Jefferson through the, what is it, the Zillow app? And, um, it, it, it's not, you know, the pandemic's over. And so I think that it's time to really put some serious thought behind making some cuts.
I agree.
And that's, that's what I have to say.
As far as the police department, I know that they're working shorthanded right now. We have got to have enough people to, to have twenty-four hour coverage.
Uh, that would be nice.
Well, no, that, that, in a tourist town, that is, that is mandatory.
Maybe work something out with the county.
The county's thin. Okay, I, I work with the county.
But it's, what, what is nice and what we can afford are two different things.
All right, let me, let me get my point across here. The county works, I know, with, with one or two officers for the entire county. Their trouble spots where those officers spend their time are way out of town. We are a tourist town. If we have something happen with one of our tourists and they had to wait twenty minutes to get the county deputy to come from the other side of the lake, we're history as far as the tourist town. Which means that, that at least half of the business downtown are gonna have to shutter their doors. We, we can't afford to let that happen. We, we gotta have officers on duty in town twenty-four, seventy. Linden and then the other towns like that, you know, they're, they're not a tourist town.
Right.
And, and so they don't have that, that obstacle there, but we do.
I, I can certainly see your point, but I just cannot see increasing the police budget by this amount. It just, we don't have, we don't have the revenue. We don't have the funds for it.
Well, why don't we look at where in that budget we can cut?
That's an excellent suggestion. Where, where, where do you propose?
Are you talking to Hollis or Ben?
Yes, Hollis.
Hollis.
Well,
Here's the deal. If y'all want me to, to come back with a balanced budget, why don't we pack it up and go home tonight, and I'll come back tomorrow and with valid budget, balanced budget.
And then we can work off that.
Yeah.
I think we still need, I think we still need to have some discussion
Well,
while, while we're here.
That's what, well, I'm for it.
We're not gonna find
Yeah.
four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But on what Hollis said, I do agree. Like, I don't fit, yes, we, we talk about the tourists, we love our tourists. But not only that, our local people, like, they are out on calls all the time. I don't feel like, I want to be safe. I want to be safe. I am happy that I see them at night, every night, riding over by my house. I see them. And my house is a, it's a neighborhood where we, we play music. They're not bothering, they're doing their job. I am happy to be able to leave my door unlocked sometimes as, when I shouldn't because I know that they're constantly riding. I don't feel like we need to cut an officer. I feel like we need to find something else. If it's vehicle maintenance, if it's this insurance, the employee hospitalization, somewhere else. I do not feel like we need to cut an officer. Like I said, looking at Robin's homework, thank you so much for this, Robin. If Dangerfield's budget is that much, I know ours should be exactly where it is or close to it. Not saying that we can't make minimal changes because I do feel like we can. But only thing we have in Dangerfield is Captain Dangerfield Day, and it's in October. We have stuff going on constantly here where we, we need officers. They are stretched thin. I, I couldn't imagine doing their job. Like, they are just, with some of the things that have went on here lately, like, we need to make sure that we're praying for our officers. We're doing everything we can to keep them lifted up. They take on stuff that should be on us, but were put out on them like they were doing something wrong. And I'm not saying that they're perfect. None of us sitting up here are perfect. But we need to continue to, to, to support them in a way that we can. Um, I do agree with you, Ray. There are some places where we can cut budget. Like I saw where in the proposed, that there, the mowing contract proposed to ego up to fifty thousand? No, I, I don't agree with that. So that's somewhere where we can cut. We can make some other cuts without having to cut one of our officers. Now, that's just my opinion.
And April's right about, uh, our locals being safe too. We have a, we enjoy a real low crime rate right now. And I think a lot of that is because the criminals know that we have a good department and good officers that are out there all the time. If we cut back and we start on Tuesday and Thursday night or whatever, not having a, an officer out on the midnight shift, guess what? The criminals are gonna figure that out real quick. And you're gonna see the burglaries and the, uh, the crime rate start going up.
Is this fiscal year twenty-three year-to-date actual? Is that what, and, and I guess that was fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Was that an actual number there? I mean, is that what the, the, the department actually spent was six hundred and ninety-two thousand?
Yes, sir. That, that's what's entered in as of right now without the audit journal entries.
Okay.
But yes.
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a place to start, going back on fiscal year twenty-three, and then looking at those, and then, uh, then modifying what you gotta modify for whatever you're gonna do, and then go from there. But you could certainly balance it that way.
Okay. And why, why is animal control in the police department budget? Because they don't, they don't do animal control, do they?
No.
No. But I think that was put in there some, probably years ago. Be my guess.
And so is, well, I already know it is. Since we're over here on animal control, I personally don't feel like five hundred dollars. I mean, that's just like saying zero. And I do know that we give money to the community center, to the library. We give, um, you know, money there. I do know Foga is the only one who does not officially have a contract with the city. But I think that that is something that we should try to work with them on and see where we can help them in the area. Because we don't have an animal control officer, and even if we did, we don't even have anywhere to take the animals to. So we, I personally don't think we can just cold turkey, cut them down to five hundred dollars. I mean, this, I saw four cats on my way here. So, I mean, without them, it's, it is work that, it's volunteer work, first of all. It's all the time of the night, all the time of the day. It is dirty work. You have to be a special person to want to do what they're doing. They're taking a chance on encountering diseases, taking things home to their families, doing, you know, all of that. And we need to, until we can have a plan in place or have better control over the animals, have something, we have to work with these people.
Well, we need to do something so that this will come to an end. I mean, I don't think we can continue forever supporting this. I mean, everything should come, you know, it should become where it could be, stand on its own feet. A lot of the problems is that we have so many of the colonies or whatever they call them
Right.
that are in town, and they're feeding them everywhere. Well, yeah, we got a cat problem. As long as we keep putting food out, we gonna have a cat problem.
Now we have fox.
Yeah, exactly. I've had a fox come up on my front porch. Well, they didn't come before we started feeding cats.
I just think that until we, clearly, we have a problem. We all know that we have a problem. But we need to try to work together because it is not their problem. It's actually our problem. And they're taking on phone calls, taking on all of that, that we actually should be taking on, but we're not. They're, I don't wanna have to go out in the middle of the night.
Well, but, but they also, like I said, are creating, I think, part of the problem by feeding the cats. It, town stinks. I mean, I've had tourists, there's a B and B behind us, and they often stop in and visit, look at the yard, whatever, and wanna know what the deal is. Because there's cats everywhere and they smell pee everywhere. Hollis has had experience.
I have, let me say first, I have great respect for, for Sharon Gulesby and Diana Carroll and then the rest of the people with Foga. I think they're doing a, a great job doing the best they can with what they've got. Now, that being said, we do have a problem. I got a lot of phone calls, uh, when this, this proposed budget came out. Most of the calls that I got came from people living out at the lake or outside, outside the city. They said, I live out here at that, uh, at the lake, and then they've done a great job out here for us and everything. Well, I think it's a crying shame that the county hadn't stepped up and done anything. I understand they, they supposedly are gonna match grants this year, but that's the first that they've done that I know of. And with them working as hard on the, the county stuff or the county animals as, as they do the city. And I know that, that there's people out in the county that come and dump their animals in town because they know that, that, uh, Foga will take care of them. You know, it's a crying shame that, that, that we have to be the ones that, that, uh, that fund the thing. Uh, I think there needs to be, uh, some, uh, some local help. They are a five oh one C three. And so that means that, that if, uh, uh, some local people, uh, step up and then make donations, that's tax deductible for them.
And, and I know that people have done that. I mean, I know they have volunteers, they have, uh, Amazon accounts set up for people, you know, sending food and stuff like that. I think this is a point to where, as long as we know we have done our part, we can't worry about what the county does because we're not going to change them. We have been talking about what the county should do, the county should do, the county should do. We can talk about that till we're blue, but they're only gonna do what... We can talk about that till we're blue, but they're only gonna do what they, they're going to do. I just feel like we should do our part, which I think we have been doing our part. I'm not saying that we have to keep increasing until it goes to fifty thousand dollars, I'm not saying that. But, five hundred dollars, we cannot cut that, I mean, we can't cut that down.
Well, we definitely, we definitely need to step it up some. I don't know how much we can afford to step it up to, to, you know, help them. But, uh, you know, I think five hundred dollars is, is a pretty drastic cut.
Even if, like Bubba said, we go back to the twenty-three, if we go back to the twelve thousand dollars. I mean, we gotta try to find ways, because they are doing a service that we should be doing here in the city. We should have some type of animal control, we should have somewhere to take the animals until, I mean, they have went all the way to New York, take, you know. We just gotta try to figure it out, we gotta try to work with them.
As, as long as we're doing the county's part, they're not gonna step up and do it.
No, that's why I said, we can only just do our part, we can't worry about the county, we can't.
Can't just keep, you know, they wanted ten percent raise in it. Well, here's the deal, we give our employees three percent.
Yeah, no, that's why I say, I'm not saying that we should go up anymore. But what I do think is we should work with them, get a contract, give money, the same way that we give to the community center, we give to the library. We need something to, and they do come to report, they come and report all the time. But I think we need to work with them on getting a contract, a contract, then we can get it to our lawyer, and then we go from there. It's just, it's just my opinion on it.
My, my feeling is, we can't cut this amount until we provide, as a city, a solution.
Right.
Once we have a solution.
They can quit feeding them.
You say we have problems.
There're gonna be dead animals then, in our, I mean, you know, on the street.
Yes, he's into volunteering to help. If they stop helping, that problem's gonna triple.
Well, but, but what's the answer? I mean, we can't just keep throwing money at it. That's not the answer.
It's controlling it, it's not, it's not stopping it, it's controlling it. Now, some things you cannot stop completely, some things you just have to control.
Well, I don't think we're doing very good at that.
And it's not even us, it's volunteers who are not paid to do it.
I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, there seems to be more and more and more and more.
And if the volunteers weren't doing what they're doing, there'd be more, 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 more.
Not in the city.
We just gotta be realistic on it. I know you don't like cats, you don't like them peeing on your porch.
I, I don't have anything, I.
I mean, I understand you don't wanna pee on your porch.
Thing is, we've got kids in town, and we've got adults in town that can't afford to go to the doctor. No way. They, they just, if they're sick, too bad, they just happen to be sick. But we're willing to pay to send these cats and dogs to the doctor. We're not worried about the people. We think they have their way out of it, well, some of them don't.
Well, I most definitely worry about the people, and I know, I mean, I know that you're, you're passionate about this, and, and I know, I do understand that you feel like it needs to be cut, but, like everybody has said, we have to have a resolution, or, we're never gonna have a resolution. There, there's always gonna be animals, there's always going to be that. People are going to feed them, there's gonna be a cat lady in everybody's neighborhood. I work with, I used to work here in town, so, Ms. Sharon, she loves cats, she takes them home with her, this was way before Foga. So, that's in her, it's something she's gonna do, she's going to feed the cats.
That's fine, but, but they're feeding them up here at the old city hall. I mean, I don't know who's doing that, but we don't, if they wanna feed them, feed them at their place.
But that's just, now, that's what we, we're not going to be able to control. That, that's what, we're not going to be able to control the people feeding the animals. But what I'm saying is.
We can, if we set a fine for it, if it's not on, if they're doing it on public property.
They could not even enforce it.
Well.
Well, the only, whenever, I look back at it a few years ago, you know, the only town of our size that has a shelter is Dangerfield. And I had asked them anything in the last, since I left in twenty twenty, but they were, they, their budget was over a hundred thousand dollars a year. They had a twenty-stall, uh, facility, and, uh, you know, like, they paid almost three hundred thousand dollars for that, but it's full all the time. They have to euthanize, they have to pay somebody to come in and do that, and all this other kinda stuff. It's a never-ending battle, everybody's the same shape.
What if we said that the only medical procedures that we would, that the city would reimburse for would be the spaying and the neutering? And what if we said that no more feeding to reduce the population? Eventually, those animals wander off where they need to.
They're gonna go where they're found food.
They will, you know, perish.
They take them, they get them other shots, also, they get them the rabies shots and everything else.
Uh, well, then the rabies, I could see.
Okay. Have you ever known anybody bit by a rabbit animal?
Yes, I have.
Okay, at the age of twenty, I was bit by a rabbit dog in Southeast Asia during the Vietnam War. If the airports had not tested it for me, I'd be gone now. I'd have twenty-three shots in the stomach for rabies. So, if these animals are running around town, not giving shots, what if they bite somebody, one of these kids, or something like that?
Or they, or had a rabies shot and then spaying and neutering.
And there are other shots, I think, for cats, I'm not exactly sure. Otherwise, what, there's, uh, AIDS or something like that, I think, for cats, I'm not a cat person. But there's other things that they could, uh, spread through the community, other, uh, little community cats.
Well, that's.
When they take them to the vet, they're getting them what they need.
Well, maybe if we let nature take its course. That would be the, whatever, the, the kitty AIDS that you were talking about, or whatever that goes through their community. I, I agree on the rabies, and then, but the spaying and the neutering, but, I mean, to provide, you know, other, I can't see just prolonged life.
I think if we actually, and I, I'm not gonna do it, 'cause I, I've seen their, their work, but if we actually went and just worked with them for a couple of hours, I guarantee you, we would change our minds.
Well, I know they work hard.
And they're not getting paid for it.
And I think, didn't they say this up there, that they test them for one of those diseases before they ever do any of the spay and neuter? And if it's terminal, they would go ahead and euthanize them.
Yeah.
So, it's not a deal where they perpetuate a problem.
I'm amazed that we're sitting here discussing whether or not we're going to fund this, when our water and our source and our basic foundation of the city is in the shape it's in, and we're in the debt we're in. I think we need to look first at our infrastructure, I think that's what the people voted for us to do. I, I sympathize with Foga, but I think they can raise money and do it on their own. I think we need to get back to the basics and do what we need to do. 'Cause our, our infrastructure's not gonna get any better with time.
I agree with you on that, and budget and everything. But, as far, as large as the buzz it is, sixteen thousand is just a drop in the bu, uh, drop, drop in the bucket.
Here's the deal, how many times do we wanna drop that sixteen thousand?
Pardon me?
How many places and times do we wanna drop sixteen thousand on somebody?
It'd be once a year, according to the budget.
One, one year?
I don't know.
This has been going on.
It's gonna be an ongoing problem.
I understand that, I'm, I'm, I'm with Ray. I think, I think God stuff is figured out, I think he's got it. And that's really what I think.
Probably if we got the totals of all the spay, neutering, shots, it would probably exceed sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably up the budget.
Their budget is much higher, they bring in lots of money to try to help do some of this stuff.
We're paying people twelve bucks an hour. We can't pay a living wage to these people that are working for the city, but we can do this. I think y'all need to get real and think about what's, what's important. Like I said, I think the cats and all, but I think they can get out and raise the money to take care of it.
Oh, when we say cats, we, we're also the volume dollars.
Well, yeah, cats got it.
So, cats and dogs.
Yes, cats, big animals.
But every town has to deal with a cat and dog and animal problem, every town does.
And I, I most definitely think we should give our people a raise, I, I do think that as well. But in reality, like I said, these are people, and it's, it's real and realistic, because I am a volunteer myself as well. So, not for their, um, not for them, but I volunteer for other things. To be a volunteer, to go out there and do stuff, like I said, you have to have the heart to do it. Countless hours upon hours, most people up here have volunteered. So, you know what work it entails to be a volunteer. And my volunteer work is clean work, I'm just giving out stuff, passing out stuff. That is dirty volunteer work. And they still do it, they do it with a smile, I never hear them complain. It is, it is realistic.
It's calling.
It's, it's realistic. Some of us don't go outside to other neighborhoods and different things like that. We don't, we don't see everything. It is realistic that we have a problem, and until we have a plan in place, like Robin said, or until we have something, we have to have them. Whether we like it or not, it is real, that is the reality, that we have to have them.
It's our responsibility.
It is.
And as somebody mentioned, I think, Bubba, this, this problem is not unique to Jefferson.
No, I know that.
It's about, so we have to continue to, uh, try to control it.
I think we need to decide what's most important and where our priorities are. And there's something about sewer and water that ranks pretty high with me.
Well, sewer and water's not in this part of the budget anyway, it's in a separate budget.
Money's money.
Well, I know, but it's a separate, it's a separate budget.
Okay, what next?
We going back to the front, or are we going?
Let's go back to the front. I, I want y'all to know that it's almost eight o'clock. And I don't plan on sitting here all night. So, let's get busy or whatever.
Well, what, are we gonna go with revenue first?
Well, that's, we could.
That's top of my page, I mean, I don't know.
Here's the deal, that's pretty much, we can't cut or add to that, that's gonna be something pretty sad. We'll figure all that out later, and, um, now that we've got the stuff from, um, Karen.
Okay, all right.
Let's do administrative, administration. Now, we have a, a twenty-eight hundred, five, twenty-eight, five hundred dollar salary adjustment placeholder.
What, what exactly is it?
Melissa.
That was removed from this budget.
Well, it's, okay, never mind, that was removed, okay. I mean, I don't, retirement, um, insurance, I'm, I'd realize that a hundred here and a hundred there, a thousand here, a thousand there, it's not gonna make a lot of difference. But it's gonna have to be done and all add up in the end. We have, um, this building maintenance, and we have utilities. And this is all on the old city hall. We need to get that taken care of, so that, first of all, that expense goes away, and second of all, so that, as bad as it is there, something needs to be done about it. It's, it's growing things that we don't want it to grow. Mold, that's why we can't be there. Um, so, but for the time being, we have to keep putting the money towards it. I don't know what we can do about hospitalization, we offer that to the employees, and we get it through, um, T M L pool there. And this is just, I mean, I think that's probably one of the cheapest ways. Robin?
What's this membership dues? What's that?
Well, we, we have to be, we're members of the Texas Municipal League, and.
Pit cog, I think pit cogs in there.
These Texas Council of Government. One of the things we're gonna have to do something about is this building. People just come and go and wander around, and nobody's here, and the doors aren't locked, and, you know, eh, when we rent it, they leave it, things a mess. And we don't have anybody that checks any of that. So, we're gonna have to do something about that. Somebody's got, gonna have to see that this place is maintained, or it's gonna be like our old city hall. The three hundred and ten for, for building capital, that's what I'm looking at, or what I was thinking would do, uh, perhaps we could build a city hall and fire station for that.
For which, which, which building capital?
Building capital. I talked to the people that we've already paid the twenty thousand dollars to, and what they've done is all they're gonna do. They came and walked through to see where, what y'all needed, what they needed, and where you wanted to put it. Never mind, we already had the place, but anyway, we paid them twenty thousand, that's it, they're not drawing up any plans. They, they drew up, uh, just like a little worksheet, but they're not doing any, any building plans, anything that we could turn over to a contractor. So, I think at this point, we oughta cut our losses and go out and find somebody to draw us up some plans. I think there's probably an architect and marshal or longview one that could do that. I think in the long run, we're gonna come out ahead. I, I don't think we oughta go in debt for it, I think we've got enough debt right now without having to plunge into it.
I had a question on, um, travel and education. Is the proposal is for to, it said two thousand, I lost my place on it.
Yeah, it is.
And to propose to go up to eight thousand?
Well, I don't see.
It's like almost down in the middle, a little bit farther down under the, the middle. It's under social security expense.
Okay, I'm looking, well, I know one thing, I went for the day and a half training with P M L, and my course cost two hundred and twenty-five dollars or something, and then the hotel room. Actually, I should be paid back for the, the gas and, you know, the hotel and that. It would benefit all of y'all to go to this. I'm just saying, it, it's.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's important.
I mean, I think Will Thomas went to a deal or something, he had paid for it himself, that's not right.
Well, I, I agree with you.
You know, you know, Melissa probably needs to go some things. We do from time to time, the mayor does, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I just wondered where, you know, like the big jump, I was just like, what's the, the big jump in that?
There's, I've sat and asked the same question a million times. Um, and we, we wanted to get a hold, just find somebody that would do the maintenance on the things around here, like the public bathroom in this building, and we're hit and miss wherever else we can need a little help. Software, we, we've got to buy new software, because they're fixing to quit supporting what we've got. That's one way they run up the bill.
Let's go up on the line with, uh, legal accounting fee and then accounting fees. What's, uh, you know, it's been broke out a little bit more, now that we're not having, uh, the big lawsuit. I don't know, you know, where we're at with this other one, for the, about the fire department blowing their horn at this guy or something. I don't know where we're at with that, but, you know, I mean, what is the, uh?
Well, I thought, didn't, didn't we move that back to the general fund? Wasn't that a, a, a carryover? That was, no, wait a minute, that was backed up with Rob, I do believe.
This is, this is, this is the general fund.
Yeah, no, okay. But I'm just, okay, yeah, Roger that, Roger that, my mistake.
I think, personally, I think the legal fees should, could be cut. Now, I don't, what, I don't know what did the accounts just charge us for doing the
The audit.
The accounting fees are the auditor and, um, yeah, if you need line item by line item to know exactly what's in it, you need to let me know ahead of time so I can print it out. And then I'll be able to tell you. On Mayor Baker's budget, he had everything listed out to the right, but the system won't let us do that, so, you let me know what line items you'd like, I can get a breakout and I can have that ready for you.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, when I see the big numbers, you know, is there some way to, you can cut a lot of them little ones and not do any good, but, you know, and I, and I know those two there, they are what they are, you know, we just, you know, you kind of, a lot of this is, uh, simply a guess, you know, but
Here, I got this. So, the, uh, this one is the legal and accounting fees. That one's actually gonna drop a little bit because that one had the appraisal district, um, payments posted in it incorrectly and those need to be moved. So, the, each month, it was like ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars in October to the appraisal district that we paid and then each quarter after that, it was eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-four. So, those will come out and it won't be as high as it is in the legal and accounting fees. They got moved over to the appraisal district. So, that was just a transposition in, in, uh, the code. So, that one will actually go down. And then in addition to that, what else went out of that for the legal and accounting fees was Mr. Martin's Civic Plus, Barry Wallace, um, Testa, Vincent, um, Clay Allen Real Estate. Uh, general code had a two hundred dollar bill in there that was for an ordinance.
So, is, could we actually cut the hundred and six? I mean, is that really what we're gonna be looking at?
I don't, and so
With your very best guess.
Madison is the fifteen hundred dollars at plus. So, what is it, two hundred and fifty dollars per hour for everything over the eight hours? So, if we anticipate utilizing her, we're gonna have to at least figure in that extra. Mr. Martin didn't charge us.
What is this inspection fees?
Ten thousand dollars.
I think you were talking about
We talked about, I think that's where the buildings, I talked about getting somebody to, to come over and actually look at the building codes and the building contractors and go out to the site. And we thought that would come in as what we charged for the building permits and then just go right back out. So, that's what that's gonna, I think on the, um, I think on the income, we have it there. I, I, I think that's something, yeah, we do, we have building inspection.
Yeah, I think you did a wash, I think you did, uh, revenue ten thousand for building inspection and
I, I think it's probably time that we, we got that squared around. We've got people building stuff in the street and it's kind of getting in the way.
I had a question on, um, city cleanup building. So, we haven't used anything out of it.
What, what, where are you talking?
Down east, almost
Fourth from the bottom.
The fourth from the bottom, yeah. We haven't used anything out of it.
City cleaning, clean, city cleanup?
But we're gonna raise it like, what's the projection?
That's for if we're gonna tear down houses that are in disrepair. So, I mean, that could be taken off the budget, you know, for right now, for this year.
And the engineering service there at the bottom, which shows we've only spent about three grand so far, so that it's, uh, you've got forty indicated in that because we didn't use that much, I don't know.
I think probably we were thinking about with all of this, um, lead pipe.
That would have been out of the water budget.
Yeah, that would, okay, it wasn't lead pipe. What were, what are you gonna use it for?
I, I thought you had said for like the city hall.
For building it, okay. Well, I, I don't think we're, if it, if, I was thinking it was just to hire an architect to get something done. It's not gonna be anywhere near forty, forty thousand. I think we probably could do that for twelve hundred dollars or something. And I think that's a high side.
For an architect?
Just know somebody to sit down and just draw out the plans, draw out the
I would like, I wanna meet this architect, yes.
And then I have another question. Um, Chamber, so are we not even going to do a membership to them?
No. I don't think we should take taxpayers' money and spend it on joining Chamber of Commerce.
Can I make a comment on this line item though? So, last year, we were paying two membership fees, uh, tourism was and we were. Their budget was already done and we paid the thousand dollars and then we gave them money to assist them with their finances. So, no, it's not in the budget, but I don't know if tourism has put it in their budget to pay that membership instead of the two.
Okay, yeah, I, I just think that
And I didn't know, I mean, on y'all, whatever.
I, me personally, just my one opinion, I think that we should support them.
We do, we give them an office.
Well, not, not only that, I think that if, I think a membership would, would, I mean, if they have a, and I know they do because I feel like that they help promote for the city as well.
Well, if we wanna give money to help promote the city as well, let's give it to our tourism department. Because you don't have to be, you don't have to join it to get promoted. You know, they promote everything. This is just, the Chamber is basically for the, the businesses and most Chambers support themselves. I know that nobody believes that, but they really do. And I just think that we're giving them the office, we're giving them a cut on the water. And I think that's probably, we've stepped out, I think, as much as we should, because it does not benefit the citizens. I mean, you tell me how it does and I'll change my mind, maybe.
Well, I think if they're helping the different businesses, they're supporting the different businesses, I think this, because I wanna say this, we, you know, I know one of your big things is feeding hungry kids, feeding, these businesses, people are asked constantly, asking them for money, they're, they're feeding people outside of, you know, they, there's some businesses who allow people to come in their back door, just pass me a note. So, I've, I feel like that's how the Chamber supports, you know, the different businesses. And I, I feel like that's a way for us to kind of help support as well.
Well, like I said, I, I, I truly think tax money should be spent for the people. And I, I just don't think, there again, I, we just can't hand out to everybody. And I, I'd realize that it would be nice if we could, that would mean we had all of our problems taken care of.
Of course.
But what else?
Oh, public, um, where is this? The maintenance on the restrooms.
Yeah.
I see that we've kind of used, well, right at, well, we've used eight thousand, we have it proposed for almost fifteen thousand. And back in twenty-three, it was at nine thousand, so maybe we can cut something there if we need to, or what do you think with that?
The maintenance of the public restroom?
It's like probably almost a tenth from the top.
I, yeah, I think we probably could, but I do, I really think we need to get somebody in there to maintain it because it's starting to look raggedy. And we don't, you know, that's just, that's a sad situation. Uh, but, y'all, we probably could cut some there.
Wonder if we could talk, uh, JEDCO into sponsoring the Jefferson Salutes America? Out of their budget?
Well?
Shouldn't that come from tourism?
Yeah, exactly. I, and here's the deal, you know, Georgia Michelle did that for years. Without coming to the city because they hustled and bustled and they got with the program. I don't understand why this can't be done that way again.
Well, Doorboard used to be a five thousand dollar sponsor, I think, and then they dropped out.
Well, but I don't know that anybody's out knocking doors to see, you know? I'll tell, when it was, before it was Verizon, they were a sponsor.
Oh, they were big, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so I, I just, I think that somebody needs to just probably be out trying to find some way to support that other than us.
Well, I know the crews got it now and I think they, they've been doing a pretty good job with it. But, but you know, nobody's gonna do it like Georgia Michelle.
Well, no.
I mean, he'd just come in and ask for money and you'd give it to him, he's that kind of guy.
The advertising, of course, we, if the planning and zoning gets together, we're gonna have, that's gonna be an expense.
Am I seeing a big jump in the, uh, election cost?
If, if, so, um, Karen is going to be presenting a contract to the city council. I don't know what all that consists of. Uh, currently, we don't have a place to set up for elections, to conduct our own elections. But there are certain times in the year when the county's not doing elections where uh, they're not obligated to do our elections for us and we'll have to do it ourselves. We can drop that. She thinks that we can get it lower than that and be able to cut there. And she was gonna try and work on something and get it back. So, I can have a better number for you, but
Well, the city owns the building up by the cemetery, right?
The election building?
Uh-huh.
That's been my understanding.
We're, we're mowing the grass there.
I think the county owns the building, I think we just own the land.
Okay.
I think. Us, we still have some election machines, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We have about forty thousand bucks worth of them or something, we've never used.
And we're fixing possibly to have an expense for the caddy to hold those. That caddy came in in, uh, well, Eric was still here when that caddy came in and it's still sitting in the fire department in the box. But Hart just sent us an invoice for it and I was told that those were paid for when the equipment was purchased. So, right now, they're working, they're researching to see if we've already paid for that caddy or not. If we haven't paid for it, then we are gonna have about a three thousand dollar expense.
Well, if we're not using it, it's still in the box, shouldn't they come get it? We don't need to buy it if it's, we're not using it, we have it.
If we have the equipment here, we have to have it in the box. If we're not
I, I thought you meant it had never been used.
It has never been used, but they went over to the county and they're under lock and key at the county. So, that's, that's why it hasn't been used.
We gave the county our equipment, you said?
They're doing our elections, so they have our equip, yes. And right now, we don't have a place to store our equipment.
We're paying them pretty hefty.
Paying who pretty hefty? The county?
Yeah.
This also includes our annual, um, our annual fee to Hart to service the equipment. This also pays for our warranty on it. Karen's, I think, was it seven thousand? I'll have to think, I don't know, I'll have to go back and look.
I don't understand why, if we've got this equipment, we're not using it. And while we're paying warranty on it, I mean
There's still, it's still our equipment, we have to pay warranty on it for election integrity. And we're unable to do our own elections right now because of the position that we're in here at city hall.
Well, I unders- I understand all that, it just seems to me we're main, we're paying maintenance on something that's in a closet someplace that nobody's used in.
It's been used, it's used every year.
Oh, it is used? Oh, I thought we'd just use their machine.
No, we use our
They use our machines?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I, I'm correct.
Well, I, I thought that too, I thought we just had ours stacked up someplace.
No, they use them for us, that's why we get a discount on our elections.
Well, I'm glad we get a discount, otherwise we couldn't afford them.
I have a question on, um, employee appreciation. I don't wanna cut it, I just wanna make sure that we're using it. Like, what are, what are we doing for, I wanna make sure that it is used.
The employee appreciation, uh, at the end of the year, the city has purchased hams and turkeys.
Okay, yeah.
So, the hams are significantly, they're, they're what, ten dollar hams maybe, if that? The turkeys are, last year, I was told the turkey was like eighty bucks. We only had like three turkeys or four turkeys purchased.
Eighty bucks for all three of them?
No.
A piece?
What, were they green bird?
I don't know.
I don't think green bird receiving that high.
People didn't get them because they were
I think everybody should get a ham unless they're religious.
No, I just wanna make sure that we are, yeah, okay, good. Yeah, I didn't wanna cut it, I just saw, I wanted to make sure that it is being used, so I just wanted to know what we were doing for the employees. Okay.
The year, in twenty twenty-three, we were slightly under budget. And so, in, in twenty twenty-four, it was raised and it didn't have to go that high, we didn't.
So, do we kind of ask before we go purchase if you want a ham or if you want a turkey? Okay, good, 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 good.
Well, you should discourage them wanting turkeys. I, I cannot believe we're paying eighty dollars for turkeys.
They, they usually get hams, but there's only, there's less than a handful that get the turkeys, but in the event everybody decides they want one.
Well, yeah. I mean, I'd like an eighty dollar turkey.
It must be, it must be from Green Bird.
I, they're, like I said, they're not even that high.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, so actually, we could cut that a little bit. Here, we're, we're paying the ante in it, but, you know. And uniforms, we could cut that a little bit. We only spent two hundred and thirty-four dollars last year.
And all the employees that got one, they're not here anymore.
Well, it, it's Amy and Lori, well, I was talking about the, the water and Oh, that's in their budget, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's in there, but this is just, yeah, we just
So, what are we ordering, just shirts?
Just the
The shirts, okay.
And this is, this would be for, I, I haven't ordered them because I'm still wearing the ones I've got, but Amy and Lori usually get two a year.
And now we have Kim.
We have Kim and if we hire anybody else.
Okay.
I, I'll be fine with what I've got.
Okay.
You can order another, Melissa.
I'm not going over
Don't get a turkey, just get a new shirt. Okay. If, if y'all think we've looked at this long enough, let's look at the next.
Are there any line items you want me to pull for you so you have better detail? I've started writing them down. I have one, two, three, four, I have six of them written down. I've started writing them down. I have one, two, three, four. I have six of them written down. If there's any off the top of your head or glancing through this, let me know. I'll print off the detail for the year so you can see exactly what's gone out of it.
I just have a question. I don't understand that engineering service, very bottom line.
Yeah, we said we're gonna reduce that because we were thinking that would been for the architect. And I'm not sure that's, I don't know, until I could, we could figure out, we'll just reduce it till about fifteen hundred. I was thinking, or Melissa and I were thinking that maybe that was for the, um, architect to draw up plans or something. We, you know, what we need to do is go back and look and see what, what was in it last year. What, what we, what we used it for. Any other questions?
Y'all realize, we're sitting here.
I do. I know I'm sitting here.
Well, I'm just saying, what we're doing is not.
Productive?
No, it's not. We've got, how much?
What's the deficit on the budget? Four hundred and seventy-five, four seventy-five?
So we need to start where it's.
Yeah, I told you.
Can we get, can we go to the street department right quick? I have a couple of things to ask about that.
Absolutely.
Uh, down towards the last two on the grant match and then the trails grant. We've got money allocated for that. It's pretty high rates. I mean, are we going to, and let me say this, makes me no difference. Are we, that Texas Parks and Wildlife recreational trail grant is a reimbursement grant. It's a deal that, unlike some of the other grants.
And we can't use it anywhere but out here.
But if, if we're not going to, I mean, I don't know. I mean, have we decided to do something else on that or not?
Here's the deal. My thought is that since we have the upkeep expense, you know, we're gonna have to pay it one way or the other. We might as well get their money. I mean, I know we have to lay it out first, but at least we'll get reimbursed for it, but it, and it's only on the boardwalk area. That's the only place we can spend.
On that, uh, the trails grant that we got, this three hundred thousand dollar thing?
Yes.
Uh, which is seventy-five thousand is our, uh, our match on that.
Yeah.
Um, I have been assured that Richard, uh, Richard Collins is going to take care of that.
It's a lovely idea. I vote for it. Okay, but we still need to put it in and then we can put, offset it in the, uh, income.
Okay. Uh, park improvements?
Yes, sir.
You see, it's at, what, fifty-five? And actual year to date is, what, thirteen thousand five hundred? What's the?
I, I'm not even sure.
Oh, it's, uh, right above the grant match from.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. For one thing, we need restrooms there.
Where?
At the park.
Which, which park? Lions Club Park?
And probably over, we, over at, um, at the community center.
I don't think that they need restrooms at the community center, but what I do, well, possibly restrooms, there is a restroom there. So, but what I do think that is needed at the community center, there is like a little pond that I'm afraid, I think there needs to be some fencing around that.
I feel then?
I think it needs to be, um, I think it needs to be some kind of fence because I would hate for a child to
Get losing.
To get loose and go back there and drown.
Yeah.
So I think we need to put some type of fence around there. I think that there is a nice little walking, little trail. I think that whole area needs to be cleaned, cleaned very, I mean, and it's a camp, we talk about mosquitoes. It is a breeding ground for the musk, and it, the water is green back there.
Well, exactly, and that pond doesn't help.
No, it does not help at all. And I think a nice fence around there and to just cut some trees down, I think it will, it will make it a lot better.
Okay.
For the time being, I, I, I think we ought to delay the restrooms at the Lions Park. I don't see a.
We have and we have and we have and we have.
We just can't afford it. I mean.
Yeah, I can, I don't think we have to have restrooms there just right now.
I, I think that the town's small enough, you can get to a bathroom pretty dang quick. I mean, but, uh, you know, you hop in your car and go.
Those children can't.
Well, can we request that from JEDCO to take a look and see? You know, they can do parks and stuff. They built this one that's downtown.
Yeah.
If, you know, ask them to take a look at it and see what they think.
Keep going to JEDCO over and over.
But yeah, I mean, that's, that's a possibility. I mean, we would be responsible for maintaining it, but, you know, keeping it clean or whatever.
Yeah.
And I had a question on, uh, chemicals and mosquito. I see that we've only used almost six thousand and it's going up an extra six thousand?
Okay, we're, um.
It's almost like maybe seven, eight down from the top?
Chemicals and mosquitoes?
Uh, yeah.
Fifty, ninety?
Alan said, when we talked about this, that he had bought a bunch of chemicals last year or something when it was cheaper and he was using those now. And that's why we haven't used as much. And I request that we start spraying earlier and do it longer. I mean, mosquito's a horrible one.
Are we talking about the fellow that drags that trailer around with him?
Yeah, that's him. Sounds like a little buzz bomb on the thing.
Does it actually do anything?
I think, I think.
I always, now, it came by my house, but I have five cans of off outside too, so I don't know, I mean, I'm not a mosquito expert.
I mean, the thing was running, but there was no, no chemical coming out, yeah.
It actually has some smoke coming out. It, it did have some smoke coming out. I did witness that last week. But like I said, I, there's some, we'll never be able to get rid of all the mosquitoes.
Not when you're surrounded by smoke, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. But we can, I think, maybe cut back a little bit.
Well, I know that chemicals are more expensive now.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have one, um, mowing contract going up to fifty thousand dollars.
Here's the deal. No, it is fifty. It, we've been paying that much. Here's the deal, and he's not doing the job. Part of the things he was supposed to do, one of them was to trim, do the edging at the police station and trim the hedges. Well, he did it and charged us for it extra. The fence around the new cemetery, he was supposed to clear, keep that cleared. We're fixing to spend forty-two hundred dollars getting that cleared that he didn't do. He's just not doing anything.
Now, somebody just came and, it, it did look pretty bad, but somebody came and now it looks very nice.
Well, we hired somebody separately to come out there and do that, yeah, exactly.
Cause I'm trying to figure out
And.
The one cemetery got done, but then I didn't, the other one by my, that's closer.
Uh, yeah.
I'm trying to figure out what the
Yeah.
Fresh mowing just, I, I would like for that one to look like that one.
My point. And, and the park needs to be mowed. I mean, he's not doing any of it like he was supposed to. And so we talked about, I, he told me, or some, one guy that works for him told me out here that, I, I asked him what they weed eat. Alan and then had cleared all this place back here that was just all run up, and I asked him would they weed eat that, and he said, well, we eat, we weed eat about nine times out of ten when we come out here. I said, well, that's good because we're paying you ten times out of ten. He also said that, uh, since his contract has been run out, that, uh, just get ready that it would go up. So we're going to advertise. In fact, we may already be.
Yeah, cause I even, uh, and I just say because, um, I did, I spoke with, I was doing something in town, having an event, and I was in a nine-one-one panic. It's six o'clock in the morning and my husband told me to let somebody wake up first before I go to calling people. And I did, people came and mowed for me. And then the next day, they came out. And I was like, it's already done now, you know? And so I was just like, you know, but they were nice. The one guy was very nice to me. He came, stopped, and I didn't even tell him who I was, so I don't even think he knew who I was. I didn't say I was April such and such and such. I just was out there picking up trash and stuff, so. And he was very nice, so.
Yeah, well, it's just, they're, they're just really not doing a good job.
And so we, I see mowing contract, city then mowing contract, so that's two separate?
They mow, uh, yes. There's, they, there's one contract for mowing the cemeteries and then there's one for everything else.
For a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
No, I think it's fifty for both.
Well, he has fifty on one and fifty on the other.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
No, okay.
Yeah, that's what I, what I was questioning.
There are two separate line items. One is for cemetery and one is for the city to keep it separated. And it was twenty-six thousand four dollars for the one and then the thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the other. The thirty-one thousand five hundred is for the cemeteries.
Okay.
Oh.
And that should be cut back to like twenty-five.
That was proposed by twenty, this year, twenty-five, it says fifty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, we, we're gonna cut that back. And we had talked about hiring somebody to do it, to mow it. We could get the equipment and we could hire somebody and probably come out. At least we would have some control over what's being done. And we might come out better off.
Are you talking about like a permanent employee or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Cause really with these contracts, you're only mowing like six or seven months out of the year.
Right.
And then, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's why.
Yeah, for, well, fifty. It, it's not a hundred, yeah. It's, it's still extending, yeah.
If we hired and had a city employee to do that, then they could take care of the mowing. Uh, they could also pick up on, on some of the other things that need to be done around the city during the time when, when the mowing is, is not going on.
But it can't be like a one-person thing.
Well.
I don't think it, cause they, yeah.
It, that's, cause just to do.
That can't be a one-person job.
Yeah, we, whenever we did it before we went to the contract, it, it was hard to keep employees and stuff like that. I'm not saying it wouldn't work. I'm just saying that it, it, it didn't then. It didn't, you know?
I'm just saying I know it would take more than one person to do all that.
We were thinking too, I mean, we've got two people hired to pick up trash, uh, to empty the trash cans, and they could probably, maybe.
Yeah, it's just proposed, you know, at that amount, that kind of.
Oh, abs, well, yeah, exactly. Like, I, I've just been really upset with this mowing business. So, that's whatever.
I've been around, Oakwood Cemetery for the most part looks okay.
Yeah.
The, the new Oakwood Cemetery, I was out there the other night and it looked like about half of it was done. And then the one out by your house, didn't look like it'd been done in a while.
Yeah, no, it, it hadn't. And I wanna say, did you come out there, Ray? Were you out there one night? I saw you. I said, Ray, you know, Ray was looking at it and, uh, but I drive by both of them every day, so I noticed that Oakwood, it looks very good when, got the trees cut. I noticed it. I was like, oh, they did a good job.
But, but here's the thing, I called Alan and said we need to get the trees cut. Well, I, I don't. Those things should be looked at. We've got grass growing in the street. Somebody should be paying attention to that other than me. I mean, I'm just saying, it's, somebody's hired to do those things and, and they need to step up.
And I did see someone spraying the grass in the streets downtown.
Good, I had, yeah, I asked Alan if he would.
He was on a tractor or something?
Yeah.
And, and that's, I mean, that's particularly why I do feel like I agree with like twelve dollars and fifty cents. That, it is kids at McDonald's sitting around on their phone texting, not even working. And we are asking, that's why we have such a big turnaround.
Sure.
You know?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, we, we are asking, you know, these men, women to do these jobs and we're expecting a lot out of them. And we're not giving back to them. So I feel like if there's a way for us to cut somewhere else and increase with our employees, I, I feel like we should.
I agree.
If it's possible, you know?
Can I backtrack one second?
Absolutely.
To the administration sheet, sheet. What's this accounting piece? It says a hundred and six thousand.
Now, were you asleep when we talked about that?
I'm gonna print that off for you. I think, I think that has the, um,
It was for the auditor.
The qualification and the money in it for the, um, new accounting software. And, and our auditor.
The auditor. Yeah, but I, we gotta get ready to do the, the audit, right?
No, that's, that's the reason why there's nothing there for the, is, is because that's for the new software. We've got to have new software for the city, yeah.
Thank you. I was wondering how a bit of.
Blank space, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
We did add in the planning and zoning budget to the administration budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they presented that at their meeting, or at the last city council meeting.
Uh-huh.
Yes, it's right after that, sorry.
And that's for the advertising of what they want to.
And they've kept us out a lot.
Okay. We left the capital outlet at three twenty-five hoping that we could get that many, that much streets in.
Where are we now? Where, where do we jump to?
Where are you back, where are we back now?
Oh, uh, street department.
Street, okay.
Yeah. We have eighty thousand dollars in here for outside services.
And so far, we've only missed twenty-six?
That's what, when Alan's department doesn't do it, he calls somebody to come out and do it, contract labor.
Was that like on the, on the, on the repair, on the water main that broke that, uh?
No.
What was that for?
The eighty thousand?
No, the, that we're at currently, we're at seventy-one, one seventy. I'm just trying to think of an example.
That was what, yeah.
Would that be, would that be the trees that they had to cut every once in a while?
That's twenty twenty-three.
This, it's, okay, it's like the holes in the street, you know, that keep swallowing uptown. Repairing those and, uh, thinks that he doesn't have the equipment to do.
Got you.
And this equipment and capital, twenty-five thousand, I'm not sure. I mean, we haven't spent anything in the first nine months. I think that could be cut way back.
Did he have any machinery that he needed to buy?
No, he's, he's contracting everything out.
No, I mean, like.
I know, I know.
Like a backhoe or?
Yeah, no, yeah. Okay. Anybody else has questions or answers? Now, we're into the watered sewer and they're fixing to go up on our water rates again. We have not signed the contract nor sent it back to, to them. And the Madison's looking at it and has some questions about it, so she was gonna call Wayne Owens and talk with him about it. I think I sent y'all that thing from Dangerfield, and if you looked at it.
Long Star?
Long Star, yes. Which really made me start wondering about some things. And so I was asking. And so I was asking him about those today and, well, just wanna say it got muddled. And so he's going to come over here when, when it's set for us to approve the contract.
You know, we asked for financials.
And who got?
Months ago.
We won't get them.
And and what we got, what we got from George was, go find them. They're on the website.
I know. Well, I I think they've lost track of the fact that it's our water. And I, you know, and I think that we just need to get around to.
I think we need a history lesson, because none of us, a history lesson on how that came to be.
Well.
And, I mean, we know in general, but.
Well, it's it's something that we can't control the cost of right now.
And here's the, yeah, exactly. And of course, we have paid the core part too. I don't know, my big question to him was, uh, they're raising our rate. What, are they also raising the rate that they're selling the water to other people?
To non-member?
To non-members. He said they were already at the, um, highest point. That they can only charge what is spent, they're they're kept at the, at cost. Now, I said, if you tap that at cost. And everything, you can only collect what's cost, where are y'all getting the money for the rest of that budget? Well, and then he went on to tell me, I asked too about the raw water that we're selling. We're selling to SWEPCO and we're selling that on a contract that was dated in nineteen eighty-eight. And we can't go up on the price of that, we're just stuck with that. For, I don't know how long he said, but. I, yeah, that, the look on your face is just exactly where I, yeah. I I didn't understand why he could, they couldn't make up the difference with those other people instead of us. But. Now.
Probably the people that were around when that contract and that agreement was entered into. They're, they're not around anymore.
They're not.
Prob- they are, they are probably turning it over in their graves.
Knowing what's happened.
Yeah, cause that wasn't the deal.
No, it it somehow we've lost traction there. Um, visitor promotion, it pretty much bounces. Except we've got, um, their payroll's going to change.
Well, they haven't, they, I don't think she's here, they met to go over their budget, so they'll give us some new figures.
Okay, okay. Uh, seizure bunny, only Tino can do that. And we don't even know what he can do it for. Okay.
Your promotion, is that the front office?
Yes, yeah, at this building.
Yeah.
No, that's not this building, that's, that's hot tax.
Oh, yeah, yeah, hot tax. It's late.
Well, there's two of them, they said, visitor promotion.
Yeah, one's, yeah, and one's.
And one's expenses.
Okay.
Okay, flipping my own throat. And we have these, um, IMP fund and, um. Revenue and expense, and that's the. Yeah, bonds, thank you. Okay, and so here we have this, um, the water and sewer budget. And we've got to figure out what we're gonna do about the raise. They want to raise it to. Melissa, help me, eighty?
What is it?
How much were they gonna raise it? They they raised it a hundred, a hundred, a dollar and eleven cents last year. And were they gonna raise it eighty-three this year?
Eighty-three or eighty-one?
The water range?
Yeah.
Net mud?
Net mud, yeah. So. I mean, I don't know, we've got to decide whether we're gonna pass that on to the people. Or, I mean, I don't know how else we could, I just hate to have to go up on their water bills again. Exactly, exactly.
A lot of people are having trouble with that.
Well, you may want to talk to Mayor Baker, because when he figured the last rate increase. He may have said that it was supposed to figure in for a rate increase for the next year also. So.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure of what his calculations.
Okay, yeah, I'll ask you that, yeah. Yeah, cause that would be a, I mean. And then we have the water and sewer budget. And if you look at.
I have a question.
Okay.
Well, I already talked about it, so I'm just trying to see, it seems like we could save a lot of money on this. Employee hospitalization or just across the board with everything. I- is there a way to possibly save some?
Outrageous.
If we, so with our employee insurance, we are through a pool. If we choose we don't wanna go with them anymore, we have to do the procurement process because of the cost of it. And and outsource and find it. We're to the point now where it's too late to go out and do that, or they'll lose their benefits.
Right.
Um, typically, they give us, they would, a, a regular insurance company would give us rates. How much does the city wanna pay? How much do they want the, um, employee to pay? What do you want their deductible to be? What do you want their co-insurance to be? We don't really have that negotiation with them. To be able to do that. And I don't have their, their rates yet, that, because of when our, uh, benefits go into effect in January. Um, we won't start, we won't get those until the end of September to to know what those rates are, August or September.
All of it, even family?
Except for vision. We don't pay family. The employee has to pay for family. And the employee has to pay for vision. We pay for the rest.
Jeez.
You're on the water and sewer fund, you said?
Uh-huh.
That outside services, it almost looks like it's gone over fund hit, year-to-date and everything like that. Almost, uh, paid a thousand dollars.
I can, I can explain that a little bit. Uh, we had a lightning strike that.
Oh, okay, the water.
On the SCADA and our insurance did, um, well, you're not seeing both payments in here. But our insurance did partially, uh, pay for that at first. It went into the water revenue miscellaneous and it came out of, I believe, the outside services for him to.
So some of that eighty thousand dollars has been recovered.
Yes, sir. And and they have just paid us the final payment for that.
Okay, it just looked weird at the moment.
And that, that's, a lot of that outside services for his department is unexpected.
Yeah.
Things that are unexpected that have to be done right now.
Yeah, you know, it's unexpected, but then you look at your proposed budget, it's the same as, you know, it didn't go up or anything. And I'm just wondering, you know, how it'll play in the future.
So what'd he say when y'all met on that?
Just that basically, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen.
And you just look it up for something you don't know.
Yeah.
So he just has to leave it like it is.
Yeah.
Leave the budget like it is.
Yeah, and li- I mean, you know, surely we won't have another lightning strike, we're just.
But there's other things that could happen.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty, there's plenty, yeah.
Exactly. So, yeah, that was kind of what, what we were, you know, trying to.
Okay, so, I was just curious, that looked awful.
Uh, yeah, I know, I.
It looked awful funny.
It looked awfully big.
And going back to net mud, it was eighty-one cents per thousand gallon.
It's what they come up again.
Yeah, it's going from two fifty-nine to three dollars and forty cents per thousand gallon. Ours, on our ordinance, is different, but, uh, because we have other things included in there.
With what region bank debit service?
Uh, Regions Bank is one of our bonds that we're repaying, one of our.
Okay, bond, okay.
Yeah, we have a twenty-fifteen and a twenty-fourteen with Regions. And then we have a twenty-sixteen A, B, and C for the expense for loan repayment. Which is three, a little bit up the page from there.
So that money going out is there to pay the bond back, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good thing, oh.
We're in there.
How many years is that for? Do you have it off the top of your head?
I don't have a lot of firm.
Well, I think the, uh, I think USDA, which is the one that did the sewer plant, was a forty-year bond. So it's, it'll be doing forty-five, I think, some of the rest of it are twenty-year. So it'll be somewhere in the mid-thirties for some of them, if I remember right.
Silly question, what's the Beth Mead couple?
She, uh, was the lady in town that died and left the money for the little park down across the street from the library.
Okay, yeah, yeah. One hundred John works on all the time?
Yes. Exactly. Um, and if you look here at this. The payroll, of course, I guess we will discuss payroll probably when we look at all of that, on the thing. I mean, that's pretty high. When you don't have but four people working, or something like that.
Yeah, so why is it such a big increase for payroll?
He's not fully staffed.
He's not fully staffed.
Uh-huh.
And then th- there's a lot of overtime work in there.
And I think all of Alan's salary is devoted to water and sewer in it. I don't think any of it's on the street.
But he he, he has a lot of overtime.
Right.
Because he charges us, he, two hours every time he comes to town. Alan. If he's called out after five o'clock, he charges the city two hours for coming in and taking care of whatever. Is what?
I said, that is a huge.
Huge salary?
Well, I I'm not negating the fact that I, I mean, I know he's pulled in every direction. I'm just looking at the actual and then.
It's scary.
I'm just looking at the, the actual versus what we're projecting.
Well, remember, he's, that's, this is, it's, his salary is totally here at the water fund and it doesn't reflect the street.
Right.
Program as well. And there, how many people on that, on this water? How many employees there? I think there's four plus M, right?
There's, there's six positions for.
But currently, they're only.
And currently, there's just the, well, we just have one lead.
Oh.
So there's three of them.
Okay, so it won't be, like, current year-to-date actual is one thirty-four.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was like, yeah.
That's the budget it'll make.
Yeah.
Had we been fully staffed, we would.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta.
Okay.
We gotta fix that.
And the RG three mess. And talking, we're probably going to have to, to put new meters in and talking to the attorney about it. And the guy from RG three just got all bent out of shape because we called the attorney and asked him to. Reach up to the other attorney and see if we couldn't get something done. Well, you know, this has been going on forever and they've got all kinds of excuses in. Our attorney said it might be a good thing to just cut and run.
Does anybody else handle those meters?
We'll have to start all, all the way over.
I mean, I.
Yeah, not, yeah, we could buy meters from somebody else.
Well, no, what I meant was the meters that we have.
No.
Does anybody else handle them?
I like my meters, my water bill was that.
Well, I want your meter.
I gave it gold.
No, that's, that's why we, in fact, he said, you know, we may even wanna have to look back to see if. We could just read it by hand.
That's me, I just manually read them.
Well, you gotta have a meter that's registering, so.
We need a, a staff.
Yeah.
Why do we need to be so high-tech?
Well.
We're not a high-tech town.
No, we're, we're back on beans and wanes.
I mean, that's right.
Well, I, I just, I'm just telling you, I think that's going to be something we're gonna have to face sooner or later. Probably sooner than later. So.
So do we even have somebody to check the meters so we can make sure? That they have been reading or if they're not reading correctly? Cause I don't think it's right if those meters are not reading and we're, cause my drain water bill is super high.
I mean, that's.
I mean, when I first moved here, almost twenty years ago, it was like twenty-five dollars. Now it's over a hundred dollars. I'm just saying, like.
Maybe it's gonna keep going up.
Yes, but I, I mean, I don't, I don't feel, I feel like we need, if we know there's almost like a defect in some of these. We need to, there needs to be like top priority to be checking people's.
Yeah, because we're, we're losing money by them not working.
I'm saving forty dollars a month.
Well, then, you should, we'll pass plate here in a minute.
Well, we need meters registers to replace them.
Yeah.
So if we don't have the registers to replace them, and we pull the meter, you're not, you won't get water.
Well, no, I'm not saying, I know, I'm, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying pull them. I'm just saying, um, just make, not pull them, but are we overcharging?
Are we sure they're not?
Are we overcharging our citizens is what I'm saying.
No, no, if they're not reading, they're charged the base minimum.
Okay, so it's, okay, 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 so, that's what I.
I haven't figured out how to make it not read.
Okay.
But if yours is reading high, you can call, let them know in the office, they'll have Alan go out and check it.
I'm the last day payer of my bill anyway, so I'll just be like, can't even find it, but I just pay whatever it says, but, okay.
Okay. And we have employee hospitalization out. The legal and accounting here. I think probably, well, we spent all that in twenty-three, but that was probably RG three. But I think that could probably come down some.
There, that might have a little bit to do with the accounting software, because the accounting software's on the, on the.
You're spreading.
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah, cause we're getting new software everywhere.
It's not broken, here it's legal and accounting. Um, when we were in the admin budget, it was requested that there be a separate line item for accounting. Well, I can't change the name of the expense account, but there was never an additional, uh, line item added here. For accounting. So I, I believe that maybe that's why it is what it is, but I could be wrong. Cause I, I mean, the twenty-twenty-four budget, at that time, the legal and accounting. You know, we have the RG three issues going on, so.
What's just outside services? Did we talk about that already and I've slept through it?
That's, no, that was, it's the same as overall the street.
That was a, the, the streets though is for filling in those synco and stuff like that. What's the water and sewer for?
For like when the blind and.
Sewer plant, something happens down there.
For, in case, just in case, is what we talked about.
Okay.
What did I tell y'all?
There's something like an agitator in there that sometimes you gotta, you gotta call specialty people, equipment company to come in there to do that.
And sometimes a water and sewer, or in the streets, go together because you have to do street improvements with the water.
Okay, anything else on here?
That, that LSLR engineering expense, the one four, one hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred is for the mapping on. Lead pipe replacement.
And we're not going to have that finished by October fifteenth, but we'll be running in there pretty close. And we've actually got, you know, like ten years to replace that lead pipe. So that, once we get this in, inventoried, we can sit down and figure out a plan to go forward. Moving right along. Well, I don't even think we've found what's next. Are you gonna sleep?
No. No, no, no. I, that's what happened to me this afternoon.
The American Rescue Plan funds for the Polk Street and Nones Street project, um.
Where are you?
We didn't have that budgeted in the years past 'cause we didn't know exactly what we're gonna allocate that money to. But Fund Fifty is the American Rescue Plan grant fund.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And, um, so City Council approved an administrator and an engineer. This is, um, this is a little bit further back.
It's almost like the fifth page from the bank.
From the back, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so there's about fifteen hundred budgeted for advertising and, um, publishing. Then there is administrative expense for our administrator and then our engineer's expense. And that's based off of what y'all approved. So the difference is what is estimated to be left over. Now, we'll have interest go into that account and we can spend interest on the, um, on the project. But JEDCO approved up to a certain amount to pay the remaining that's due on the, uh, Polk Street, Nones Street project. So I don't have those figures in because we don't know what that's gonna be. And if JEDCO's gonna pay, then it'll be in the budget. But the, the, just so that you know, it is in the budget here for the American Rescue Plan.
I don't know if I missed it, but on the fire department, on uniforms and radios, there's nothing budgeted.
I was looking.
Yeah, we did talk about it.
I missed, I've lost that one.
We did talk about the fire department.
Fire department is after the administration budget and after the planning and zoning.
It's right before the police.
Then you have municipal court and the fire department.
Well, municipal court, pretty, pretty boring.
It'd be, um, general fund with the department code of seventy-two.
And looking at the municipal court, is there, when you thumb through there, do you see anything?
Nothing jumped.
Okay. Now, the, the police, I mean, the police, the fire department. I.
Aren't they supplying their own uniforms?
No.
I don't think they, I don't think they have uniforms.
They don't have uniforms. They just show up.
I think they get their, uh, bunker coats and stuff. I think they buy that themselves, I think, but it's been a long time since.
Uniforms considered their firefighting equipment?
I don't know.
So they spent fifteen hundred dollars this year on it. I'm not sure what was.
I was in there almost twenty-three years and I don't know really what they.
They never bought you a uniform. Uh, and minor tools also, so, you know.
And then the radios. I don't know.
We just got through buying some radios, I think, a few years ago. Got upgrading their radios. I believe that's it.
Well, and.
I don't know.
A lot, I don't.
I hadn't talked to any of them, so I don't know.
I don't know of the radios. I, I'm not sure. I know they still have radios, but they get their alerts on their cell phones now.
A lot of it's switching to cell phone.
So I don't, I mean.
Oh, they're on fire, they're only gonna have radios.
Yeah, I think they still use the radios, but.
Well, there, radio and tower maintenance?
I don't know. I just thought I'd bring that up.
There's thirty-six hundred dollars.
Up, it's further up. We have radios and tower capital and then we have, um, radio and tower maintenance. So, uh, there's nothing in the capital.
What does that mean?
It means we're not gonna buy any more of them, we're just gonna maintain it.
I, when Victor stopped by the office last week, I had him glance over this and, um, he nodded his head and said, okay. I let him know that the insurance rates went up, um, but.
Just that rest of the uniforms ain't coming.
At one time, they had shirts, you know, that, that said Jefferson Fire Department and everything. They wore it to their beatings and everything. I don't know that they're doing that anymore.
Okay. Um, what is the capital outlay on here for? I know I probably forgotten, the fire station.
Yeah.
That may have to do with the trucks.
Usually that's what it is, repairing the trucks and stuff, I think.
The capital outlay? I thought it would be vehicle equipment maintenance. Or vehicle maintenance or?
Well, they bought, you know, they bought some, uh, they bought a new jarls of life and they paid for it themselves, I think. And, and, uh, I don't know. I don't know what it goes for.
Buying on uniforms, firefighting uniforms.
Capital outlay this. Okay, well, we shall ask and figure that one out. So what is that, what do we, what have we not talked about? Excuse me. I think we covered bunches of it.
I think we did good. I mean, I think we needed to. We needed to discuss.
Okay, well, I will sit down tomorrow. Yeah, we do. It's Lina, Lina Pope.
And she has a section.
Yeah. Yeah. It's Lina and Jim prosecutors. And we wonder why they don't have much coming here.
So are we adjourned?
Tomorrow.
Six thirty, okay.
Like, no, I'm sure she does.
You're, you're, you're done here for twenty-six hundred dollars. Twenty-six hundred dollars.
For her phone?
I've got probably a portion of the police department.
I.
Also.
Oh, okay.
'Cause, um, they do all of that over at the. So they, they kinda separate those expenses out.
So are we ready to have a motion to adjourn? Or make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
How long ago? Okay. Hollis made the motion, Bubba seconded it, and the rest of us yelled.
I raised two fingers.
Okay.
Just to let the, just to inform the council as they head home. There were four, there was a pack of five skunks on the way home near the courthouse. So be prepared as you drive home or walk home, whatever you want to do, that there is a pack of five skunks near the courthouse. So be prepared for that.
Face to face with the skunk.
They walk in pairs? Oh. Oh, really?